To the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers, if you'd now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to define the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Grandquist.
Here.
Langley.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Weeblehouse.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson. Clausen. File.
Here.
Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's a second.
Motion second?
Your Honor, I need to abstain from voting due to item number nine.
No discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, council member Weeblehouse abstaining, motion carries.
Okay, but then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So move, Your Honor.
Second. No discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Moves us to item number 22 on the agenda, under Special Presentations. We have a proclamation for the month of June 2019 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and June 21st, 2019, as the longest day. We'll read the proclamation. Whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive degenerative brain disease tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and whereas Alzheimer's disease is an urgent public health issue impacting the nation's public health infrastructure and affecting an estimated 5.8 million Americans, approximately 34,000 people in Nebraska alone, and 83,000 care partners who provide approximately 94 million hours of unpaid care per year, which is valued at nearly $1.2 billion. Whereas there's a need to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease and to honor all the caregivers who support and care for loved ones with Alzheimer's disease, now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, by the power vested me to hereby proclaim the month of June 2019 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month in the City of Norfolk, and urge all residents to wear purple to help spread global awareness of the Alzheimer's Association's vision of a world without Alzheimer's disease. And be it further resolved to observe June 21st, 2019, as the longest day, and urge all residents to show their support on that day by wearing purple and engaging in a day of activity honoring the strength, passion, and endurance of people facing Alzheimer's disease. Is there anyone here tonight to receive the proclamation? Item 23, we'll hear from representatives of the Norfolk Airport Authority, will provide an update on current project status, airport activity, and perspective pertaining to plans for a new terminal and fixed base operator building. So, welcome.
(inaudible)
Okay. I am, good evening. I am Terry Walker, the airport manager, and we'll just give you a little, little bit of what's been going on at the airport and some information on the fuel sales and the dollars and the hangars that we have. Okay, is that better?
It's better, thanks.
Excellent. Actually, our fuel sales, our gallons and dollars are both down a little bit, and from last year, and that is mainly because of the finishing up of the Stormshore project. I took numbers from April of last year till, till the current end of April this year. We're down about 19% on gallons and about 10% on dollars, and that is, of course, because of the price of gas. We had our main runway with instrument landing system on it was closed down for quite a while during the project, which really affects, affects our traffic, and then we had a bad winter, and it lasted a long time, and that, it does make a big difference. Out of our hangars, we have, out of our 47 hangars, 42 of them are rented, and we've, we've also had some turnover in hangars, we lost a couple of tenants, and, but we're building it up again, so we're looking forward to having a good year, that's what we're planning on, we always have to look forward to that. We have discussed before having aviation economic impact study, and that is not an easy thing to accomplish. Now, the Department of Transportation, the Aeronautics Division, has been given grant money for that, and they have hired a company out of Wyoming, it's called GBA, and they are, there, Mr. Ed Young, he's the manager aviation market leader for GBA, and he's going to head up this, this economic impact study, and they started last fall, and it's going to take a year. So, when we have the results of that, we will be sure and let you know when it's available. It's going to be like a living document, so we can go in and update and keep it up to date. We have a rental aircraft on the field, you know that. Rich Clausen is a certified flight instructor, and he currently has five students, so we're pretty excited about that, because pilots are badly needed, and we hope, we hope that just keeps getting better. I was going to talk about the Pilots Association folks on the field, but I'm going to let Bill do that, but first I want to mention that 2019 is the 75th anniversary of the year that the airport was dedicated. So, we're going to get together with Barnstormers, we have something going on to celebrate that, and, I think it's the, the weekend after Labor Day, it's September 7th and 8th, and I'll let Bill talk about that, too.
Are you done?
Yes.
I'm Bill Steveson, I'm one of the members of the Airport Authority. I'm basically going to give you an update about what things have been going on at the airport, starting off with the Norfolk Pilots Association. Last summer, some of the local pilots got together, started talking, and said we should have a group of people around here that fly, to help promote Norfolk and the airport. So, started putting out emails and talking to people, we've got about 30 members. We meet once a month, Thursday of every month, we have breakfast out at Barnstormers, or we've been doing that in the winter, because it's too cold to cook out in the wintertime, so, but we'll start having cookouts, different people will host it at their hangar, so we'll come in, we'll go fly, we'll come back, we'll talk about the flights. They did a kind of a celebratory flight, they got nine aircraft, and anyone that wanted to go along and learn about aviation, they filled all the seats, took off from here, went up by Wayne, went down by Pilger, and then came back and landed at Norfolk Airport, and then had a little cookout, and lots of good discussion about flying.
And you don't have to be a pilot, anybody can come and see what's going on. Of course, if anybody ever wants to come over to the airport, I'll pick you up the weekend or not, we set something up, I'll be glad to see you there all, you can call.
It's already generated interest in other people. Just this last week, when we had our meeting, we had two people, a local physician and a local student, that actually was very interested in aviation, in fact, he signed up, he's going to UNO Aviation Institute in Omaha, but he's from here, and he's going to come back here, so that's a good thing to have for Norfolk. Like Terry said, we've had a few people start flying, the five plus seven, we're really using that rental airplane quite a bit, it's nice to have it. Years ago, we had two, and they were always busy, and this one's staying, staying hot quite a bit. We have a monthly fly-in, there's a magazine along the state aviation community called PyRep, they talk about different things at different airports across the state. The third, I'm sorry, the last Sunday of every month, we have a fly-in, so if any pilot wants to come in and fly into Barnstormers, they come in there and they get their breakfast free. So that tends to bring people in, like everybody else won't fly in for something free, or come around for something free. That's generated quite a bit of interest. Like Terry said, we're going to celebrate the 75th anniversary of the airport this year, we're also going to rededicate our airport, it's Carl Stefan Memorial Field, Norfolk Regional Airport. It's a regional airport because of the amount of traffic we have in there, we have quite a bit of traffic. I think last year, we had 10,000, over 10,000 operations, that's takeoffs and landings, that's quite a bit of traffic. Some of the people that come in here, UPS comes in six days a week, we have physicians that fly in, we have a lot of agricultural airplanes, sprayers, Dale's Flying Services is cranking up. Last year, we had 18 planes working for it. They don't even shut those off, they come in in the morning, they start them up, it's a turbine, so it saves time on the engine, they just come in, chalk it real good, and if the guy's got to get out and take a little break, whatever, he does that, and they fill the tanks, and off he goes. So they keep them turning and burning pretty much all summer. There's lots of local businessmen that have got together, they've realized that an airport is a great thing to have, because you can get places quickly. Instead of driving two hours to Sioux Falls, or six hours to Kansas City, you can be there in an hour. There's at least three airplanes that I know of, with four and five different businesses have gone in together and purchased it and got one of the pilots, and it kind of uses a shared market there. And they keep getting bigger airplanes, so that's good, that means business is booming, and they want to go faster and take more people. We have the pipeline patrol that comes through there, MPPD, all the different pipelines, all the different electrical companies, aviation is how they look at their stuff. After we had the flood, we've had some groups in here, over on the east side of town, they had to restring the wire across the river, they did that with a helicopter. They put up the two, two towers on both sides, and they hook a rope to helicopter, and he pulls it across. They did that here, and then end up by Niagara and a couple other places in the state. Just the other night, we were in our meeting, an airplane taxied in, and I don't even think about this stuff, but Dan said it was probably something good to let you guys know, Children's Hospital has a neonate team, whenever we have a baby up here that's sick, they have a helicopter and an airplane, if the helicopter's busy, they'll send the airplane. So the airplane will fly up, land at the airport, Norfolk Ambulance will meet them, they'll pick up the crew, they'll run over and get the baby, sometimes that can take two or three hours to get that baby stabilized the way they want it, they bring them back out, put them on the airplane, and less than an hour, they're in Omaha Children's. So that's just some of the benefits that we have at the airport. Another one that we had, that I was kind of surprised to learn is, there was a guy out here that was tracking eagles with a helicopter. He parked out here, and he follows the path of the eagles, they've got sensors or something on him, so that was kind of interesting to learn about. That's about all I've got, you've got any questions to me?
Thank you, Bill.
Well, I'll talk about the capital improvements that we have going on. He mentioned that, oh, okay, I guess we have a, we have a handout of, I'll get to that in a minute, but, and that was quite a deal with MPPD, working out there, the, the one tower fell over in the river, and the river had pressure on it, and then they had, they can't get out to the river and unhook the wires off the tower, well, because you can't get there, or if you did unbolt it, why, it would, it would go off like a rubber band, because it had all of that on it, so they, they take a winch on each side of the river and, and pull slack in it, and then a guy hangs over the river and unbolts the wire with the, hanging down from the helicopter, and then they let it all loose, and it comes up and out of there. But they were, they were in a hurry to get that done, because they were worried about a tree or something coming, coming down the river and catching on the line, and jerking a few more towers down. That was quite an operation out there, and they're still working out there, they, they got to, they got to put two towers in now, because the location was in the middle of the river, and if you move it right or left, or up and down the line, why, then the span's too much, so they got to actually put, build two new towers in. Anyway, so much for that, they, they use our airport quite a bit. Capital improvements, we had a bid opening last Thursday for our, our runway overlay and runway displacement project. The bids came in within the budget, they were, bids came in at 2.52 million, and we had a budget at 2.54 million, we heard today that the FAA approved the pricing, and, and that project is going to go. The, the money has been, the way that works, they, we submit a, a project to, to the FAA, they secure the funding for it, for the project, and we had a budget of like three and a half million dollars for the, the total budget, design fees and all that kind of stuff. And then, and then they, we do the design, it goes out for bids, it comes in, and of course, it's good to have it within the budget, and then it goes back to the FAA, and they actually appropriate the money for it. So it's, it's been approved, that it's, it's a project that is on the board, so now, the pricing has been approved, and we've got our contractor and whatever, and, and we just wait for them to give us the appropriation. So I don't know how soon that'll come, we're hoping, we're hoping it's within 60 days, and that project will go this summer.
(inaudible)
No, none of that does. Now, if you remember, this project is part of a, a long-term one, some of, some of the, they've been on the council a while. The Norfolk Airport has had a waiver for, for 50 years or so, or however long we've been there, that there's obstructions on the northeast corner of the airport. So after the problems in Chicago with the plane running off the end of the runway, or whatever, they, they decided that they don't want anybody with waivers anymore. So, we did a, we did a study, some people don't like studies on our court, but anyway, there were several options we could do, move the whole runway, or whatever, we ended up displacing the runway 300 feet, or displacing the, the landing threshold from, what number is that?
1-9.
Yeah, so, the numbers are going to change on the airport, but, so the, the 1-9 approach, we displaced the, the landing threshold 300 feet down, and then, so that's what the project does now, we move the threshold down, move the lights down, and of course, we're going to overlay both runways while we're at it, new painting and, and that kind of stuff. So that's the project that's going now. The second part of that project will be land acquisition to the north, so there's a, there's a few tracks of land there that, that the FAA says that are in the way, so that'll be the next step. So that, we had, we had meetings with those landowners a while back. So that's going on, that's what's going on this summer, as he did mention, the numbers are going to change to 220 instead of...
1-19.
1-19, because magnetic north changes, and that's something I don't know a lot about, but it changes, so it's, it's moving up on the north, up where magnetic north is, and it moves, so that's, that's a little hard for me to understand, but, but the numbers are going to change. And then in our, in your packet, we've been discussing the fact that we want to build a new terminal building, fixed base operator building, or whatever, if you look at the handout that we hand out to you, we're in the, in the feasibility study, or, or the, basically what we need study right now, so, so if, this is, this is fairly general, and this is pictures of other FBO sites, but basically, we're looking at, at a location on the airport where it should be, what would work best, and what fits in with our, our current operations, where it will go, and I think the, the last page...
(inaudible)
Oh, yeah, okay. And if you turn that the right way, Highway 81, up is north, I guess it's right, but anyway, that's the location that we've picked out. And basically, we're looking at the functions and the occupancy, and who's going to be there, and those kind of things, and then, of course, we have to figure out what we're, what we're going to need as far as, in the building, there's been discussion, I believe, with some of the city design firms, do we need a fire sprinkler or not, and, even if, I mean, if, it would probably be my decision that even if, even if we are waivered, somehow not to have a fire sprinkler system, I would probably hope that we could get one, just because everybody else has, I mean, everybody else does it and thinks it's a good idea, so just because we're a government agency and we can go without it, I don't know if that's a good idea. And then, of course, water and sewer, the, the city water and sewer came out there right to Sherwood Road in turn, so we were probably hook on city water and sewer, I think that would be a, a good idea, and get that extended down, so, so we're on the planning stages. We did have a preliminary budget there in the back of the, that's what's on the last, next to the last page. Part of it, part of what we're looking at, if you, if you look on the map, there's some apron expansions, and some of the project we'll be able to use federal funding for, so I think the last page is, is eligible for federal funding, and then the cost of the building and terminal is pretty much 100%, our own funds. And we'll probably discuss a bond issue, to issue a bond for so many years, when we, when we get a little closer to what we're going to do, and what the needs are, and what we, we're going to recommend, then we'll look at financing on it, but...
And we have received a bond for when we purchased the Norfolk Airport, the North Aviation Building, from Jim Coates, when he left, and that we gave out, we bought those buildings, and we gave the FBO that kind of facelift at that time, that bond, this December 2019, that bond is paid. It's completely...
So if you, if you, if you know how projects work out there, if, if you are a aviation enthusiast, and you want to build a hangar for yourself or something, we have lots available that you can lease from us, and then you put the real estate improvements on it, okay? Well, Renato had a FBO facility, and then he sold it to Coates, I got, he got killed, and Coates ended up with it one way or another, but, but anyhow, when he went out of business, the Norfolk Airport Authority purchased all of the real estate improvements that were on the lots that he had, and we, we had a bond issued to do that, and those are paid off now, so we rent those facilities out, and it's done a little differently now.
And the current FBO has to be at least 50 years old, it's, it's an adequate...
Well, it doesn't serve the function that we need right now, I mean, when it was built, 55 years ago, or whenever it was built, why, the air traffic, or the airplanes are in it, or, or people, or functions, or things that went on there, so it's, it's basically outdated, and some of you have been out there and in there, so, so that's what we're looking for, and, and so we want, all of the money for the project that we're building right now was in our budget for last year, right? So, and, so that one's, the, the current project that we're doing this year is paid for, so, and we're not going, we won't be asking for any money in this year's budget, well, there might be a little research money, or, or whatever, but so then the next year is when we'll, we'll come to the city, and this is our plan, this is our, this is our budget, and this is what we would like to do.
If you look at that packet, and look at some of the pictures, I've been in all every one of those airports, when you come in an airplane and ride and taxi out, it's your front door, it's the gateway to your city, we want to give the best presentation of people coming to our town as we can, so they want to come back and stay. One other thing we talked about at the 75th anniversary, there's a lot of stuff going on that weekend, one thing they're having is called the Wyoming Wings, and they're broadcasting that from about the 6th state area, pilots can fly in, they're going to have three bands out at the airport, they're going to have food specials at the restaurant, they're working out a deal with some of the local motels, because pilots can't fly in, they have a really good time, and then get back in the plane and fly home, so we're setting up some motel rooms and stuff for them, so they can spend the night, and then the next morning, the Experimental Aircraft Association is going to have pancake breakfast. So, we can get them here, feed them, show them a good time, show them our city, and then feed them again, and send them home, they can come back next year.
One issue that I think you touched on a little bit, I got phone calls here a while back from some senior citizens in Norfolk, people that have been around Norfolk for quite a while, and, and associated the, the airport as Carl Stefan Memorial Airport. When we changed the name four or five years ago, and Barnstormers took down the Carl Stefan Memorial Airport sign, his name was not out there anymore. So, we got complaints about that, and basically, on the, on the hangar there, it's going, it's going to be the Norfolk Regional Airport, Carl Stefan Memorial Field, Field, will be painted, and his autograph will be underneath it. Now, we had quite a bit of discussion about that when I first moved to Norfolk, and you were to look up in the, in the telephone book, the Norfolk Airport, it wasn't there. And if you didn't know Carl Stefan, and didn't, didn't know, didn't know his name started with a K, I mean, even if you, if it was Carl, it was, it was listed as Carl Stefan Memorial Airport, and if you didn't know that, I couldn't find it. So, just some of the things that have been going on. Any, any other questions?
Terry, you talked about GBA.
Yes.
What, what is their, what are they supposed to be doing for you?
They're, they're doing the economic impact study for all of the airports in Nebraska. And they're doing it, I think, while they're doing it, the surveys that I got were for the survey monkey, and I provided them with information on the last several years for the airport, the dollar project, and all that has been funded into the airport, in fact, it's been like, in the last, seven years, we've received like, seven, at least seven million dollars in charges in Norfolk, upgrading our airport, and I supplied in with businesses that are on the field, the names and the contacts, and I supplied them on, the names, the people that have aircraft on the field that fly for business, and the lieutenant names and contacts, and I think Olson Associates is one of the firms, and there's, I think, three other engineering firms working with them in Nebraska, they're contacting these people, gathering all this information, and they're going to...
So, so it's not, it's not specific for the Norfolk Airport?
No.
Norfolk is included, and there will be a report about us, but it will be all of the airports in the state.
So then, this particular GBA study, you really can't draw a link to your request for a, for an FBO? That, that, does that anything do with it?
This, this study is not being done because we're doing this, no.
Okay, it's being done anyway, right?
This is being done by Aeronautics Association, they're, they're doing this for the state.
I see.
But it will still, I mean, hopefully when I, hopefully when I see the result of it, it'll say, all right, if this many, if this many people fly into your airport, it's this economic plus impact for your community, I mean, I'd like to see that as much as you would.
And I think Olson Associates is one of the firms and there's, I think, three other engineering firms working with them in Nebraska that are contacting these people, gathering all this information and they're going to, I've never been in, I was in that study.
It's not specific for the Norfolk Airport. Norfolk is included and there will be a report about us, but it will be all of the airports in the state.
So then this particular GBA study, you really can't draw a link to your request for an FBO? That, does that anything do with it?
This study is not being done because we're doing this.
Okay. It's being done anyway.
This is being done by Aaron Otten, I don't think, they're doing this for the state.
I see.
But it will still, I mean, hopefully when I, hopefully when I see the result of it, it'll say, all right, if this many, if this many people fly into your airport, it's this economic plus impact for your community. I mean, I'd like to see that as much as you would.
Yeah, and that's kind of, kind of leads me to kind of where I was going with that whole thing. So if you're looking for an FBO, what, what, what's the hopeful outcome of that in terms of additional sales or additional impacts? Well, I know, I understand that, but what, what number do you have in your head that says you're going to go in and spend three or $4 million and have an FBO? How do you expect to pay for it?
Yes, I understand.
So what, what can you tell us about that?
Well, hopefully we'll have good return on this impact study.
Yeah, but it doesn't sound like the impact study is really going to tell you whether we need an FBO. Or am I missing something?
Well, a new terminal.
If the results of the, how much the use of the airport impact should continue to be.
Okay.
Depending on what different type of businesses you have, what, if they can actually quantify a rough dollar amount, because we've been looking for this for a long time and I don't have the math for it.
Sure.
But each airplane, each person that comes into the airport earns X amount of dollars.
Yeah.
And they spend it in the state. We're trying to quantify, how much is that? Okay, if we can get, like when the OCT pipe guys were coming in, I don't think they drove up from Omaha, they flew in. If we want to get bigger businesses involved in our community, aviation's the way to go. Because they can get in and out, they can service their people, they can service their business and it's been a, it's.
But you understand what he wants to know. If we spent $2 million out there, how many more people are going to come? I mean, that's what that's.
Yeah, and that study is not going to, it'll tell you the impact when people do come, it's not going to tell you how many are coming, right? So I guess, or does it?
Thanks.
Well, so what will, does it have an impact on?
How many are coming?
Beg your pardon?
How do we know how many are coming?
Well, I don't, you know, I don't think that we do, but the question was, will this study, does, is this study going to tell you what type of a new terminal building you need? Is it going to tell you what the projected impact on the community is going to be?
It is not.
They're not related?
It is not specific to the building. It is, it is if you have an airport and you have this many landings and this many people here and whatever, then it does this impact for your community.
Okay.
Okay. Then you've got to decide, what does it take to bring, bring more people here to have them here? And so I don't think you'll be able to open it up.
What you're talking about, it's a statewide analysis that's probably done every few years anyway.
Yeah.
Probably doesn't get real specific into any one airport because it's a statewide study. I think, you know, regardless of that, airport, the airport's a critical part of our infrastructure. It's infrastructure we don't probably talk about enough and for Norfolk with its geography is, is very important, as you stated, for businesses and quality of life. This is a big lift, it's a big investment, but I think it's a needed one. My question would be, how did, how did you guys, how did the Airport Authority Board begin the process of analysis for this? How long has a new terminal been in discussion? What was the process for looking at how to go about it?
I would say what's good, five to seven years maybe, we've talked about some that we'd really like to have. Our FBO, we've noticed that pilots that come in and they're there all day, we don't really have like a pilot's lounge to accommodate them.
Just one, one time in particular that I happened to be over there, I walked in the pilot's lounge, which, which is a room with two recliners in it. And I didn't know this guy was in there. I turned on the light, I was going to get something out of the closet and he's in there with a dreadful migraine headache. I mean, he needs, they need to have some space of their own. We will have, we would like to have a couple of meeting rooms in the new building, which others could use. During the flood, when Senator Fisher came out and met out there, we made arrangements for them to come after hours. It would have been nice to have a bigger room, a nicer place. And when the governor comes, it's pretty packed over there and we drag the flags over from my office and we warm up the hangar if it's in the winter time and get out the folding chairs. But it'd just be really nice to be able to accommodate some more of the media items and maybe take a little better care of our pilots that are there. Have more room for them.
Another thing we're looking at too is with the increase in the interest of flight instruction, we really don't have a place, I mean, they've got a table there they can work at, they can go and stand in the hangar, which in winter time is not the warmest place to, you know, learn about the airplane. We'd like to get a little better facility where we can put some, some flight training information in there, you know, a study room so they can discuss things. The pilots come in there, right now they're flight piling on a kitchen table. We'd like to design our building around aviation and things that aviation needs.
Right. And to that point, have you guys, you present some examples of what I assume are fairly recently completed newer terminals, Grand Island, Silverhawk and Lincoln, Millard? Are all those within the last, what, 10 years?
Yeah, I think, yeah. And then Net Jets or Jetlings. So Brian Nelson was HBR, first architecture startup in the year of 2008.
Well, okay, let me just ask, how did you come up with a number without talking to consultants or design people?
We have, we hired Olson.
You have worked with Olson, haven't you?
We hired a consultant, we got somebody in the budget last year for that. Two years ago. No, these, and these are, are, these aren't final. I would say this is a, like a draft.
This is very, very clever.
We wanted something and we've been working with Tom and this is what he came up with.
We basically gave him, here's what we envisioned, you know, we need space for A, B, C and D. In his estimation as an engineer, what would be the appropriate size? You know, what do we need? Is there something we're not looking at? Is there too much of this, not enough of that? So that's sort of using the consultants, in fact, their debt is, because they've looked to follow.
One issue that I've mentioned before, you know, the city of Norfolk Airport is funded by taxpayers within the city limits, Norfolk only. All right, so you know where the city limit line is. I mean, EBM out there and my warehouse is north of Eisenhower and whatever, or north of Alaska and whatever, don't pay airport tax. And even, even our own tenants that are at the airport that are taxed don't pay airport tax because we're funded within the city limit only. Now, the entire community benefits from the airport and that kind of stuff. So I wish we could fund the airport with Tri-County or with the region that we serve. But if you go to Madison County Commissioners and say, hey, you know what, we'd like you to have some tax money to support our airport, that doesn't go over very good. So, you know, the benefits, the entire region benefits from the airport, but the, only the citizens within the city limits of Norfolk pay the bill. I wish we could do something about that, but I don't.
Dan, are you aware of another model that, that works differently? A regional airport that is funded through tax authority of regional, local government?
Yeah, absolutely. Other airports are set up that way and whatever. We come, we come by this type of funding kind of by default because instead of coming to you, 16, 17 years ago, instead of coming to you, we sent our budget straight to the county. We had levying authority of our own. Okay? So we, we levied the taxes. So 17 or so years ago, that was changed and put under the city's jurisdiction. Well, I guess nobody was paying attention. I don't know why it only went to the city limits only, but that's where, that's where it went to. So, so yeah, what we ought to do is get, get a list of the addresses of the.
We can find that out.
Well, let's get a list of the addresses of the people that rent hangars from us that have a city, that live in the city limits, city limits. And I'm sure over half of our hangars and half of our activities that go on at the airport are done by people that don't, that don't even live in the city limits or more. You know, so I don't, I don't know where to go or what step to take to change that. But anyway, just one of those things.
How many members of the Airport Authority Board right now? How many, how many board members do you have? Okay.
And we realize if it went to a regional, we'd have to have representation from the whole region. You know, that's, that's the way it would be. I understand that. Well, we appreciate your time and.
Any other questions for representatives of the Airport Authority?
Right.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Council, just for clarification, one of the representatives there mentioned that they would be tying into city water out there. We don't have water at the airport. It just goes about 300 feet south of the river. So, and their budget does reflect that they would be using, using well for fire and domestic purposes.
All right, that moves us to our public hearings. Item number 24. I will open this public hearing at the request of Elkhorn Valley Bank and Trust to consider a zoning change from R1, single-family residential district to C3 service commercial district on property addressed as 306 and 404 South 25th Street. And to open the discussion, Val, can you give us some background, please?
Yes, thank you. This piece of property is in kind of the northwest corner of 25th Street and 275. Pizza Hut is just to the south. This is currently zoned R1. Here a few years ago, it was being, gone through the process to zone R3, but that was pulled prior to that being finished. So it still is R1. And this, like I said, is a C3 request. So they are aware that they would need buffer of 15, or 30 feet to the north and the west because it would remain R1 with the residential there. And we have representatives here that can speak to it.
Okay, thank you, Val. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now.
Good evening.
Good evening. I had a short email address, I get this quicker. Basically, I represent Elkhorn Valley Bank and Trust. And what we have before you this evening is a request for a change of zoning. It's currently zoned R1, as Val had noted, going to C3. Part of that was a process in working with Elkhorn Valley Bank and city officials as to what was the best route to go. As you'll note, this is a property that is technically, it's two lots and it's located immediately north of Wing Street, just off of 25th Street. If you look at the location of the main bank, it is located on the southwest corner of one of the lots and that basically adjoins and abuts that of Highway 275. So if you go down there and come, you'll have Wing Street and then the main bank will be facing or adjoining or abutting as close as possible to Highway 275. This zoning does not comply with your comprehensive plan. This was to be an R1 as opposed to a commercial. But I think, as any one of us can appreciate, especially longtime Norfolk folks, if you drive now or would drive into Norfolk from the west, we're presenting quite a beautiful look of that corridor. If you really think about it, you're going to start, as you move in from the west to the east, you're going to now have Fountain Point right before the roundabout, which is sharp looking. And then you continue in and you're going to have Faith Regional Health Services, which has a great presentation, as well as the South Medical Office Building right next to it, directly on Highway 275. As you all know, across the street from where Elkhorn Valley Bank is going to be on Highway 275 is going to be Midwest Bank. And then you have Pizza Hut and then we move into our retail area. So some of our best face for the city is going to be coming in from our west to our east. Out of full disclosure, before the Planning Commission, there was also a conditional use permit, just to let you know. I will let Aaron Otten speak as to the type of building, but we are asking for a height, enhancement because of the length or the, excuse me, the height of the building. So this is one of those that in my past, when you practice law long enough, you get to see a lot of things. And in my 30 years, one of the things is, is that working with, one of my clients is Norfolk Catholic. And so the client has been made aware, Elkhorn Valley, of the uniqueness of the property. And Mr. Langley grins because he would have been a part of that process when Norfolk Catholic put in their track and field and all that area. This is a unique area and the buffer, I think, is, you know, when Val noted that with a C3, the buffer's going to be 30 feet. That's wanted by Elkhorn Valley Bank, obviously. Instead of building right up to the edges or closer to with a residential, this is going to have a greater northern boundary. So as a result, as you can see up on the diagram, is you're going to have trees, the anticipation is trees. And the other thing to address on the north side of this property, as we learned at Norfolk Catholic, is, is that we have to be cognizant of groundwater, both above and also groundwater, subsurface waters. And so the plan is to address that as well. So they have a good plan in place, very similar to what Norfolk Catholic did. And as a result, we have avoided any issues with the neighbors. So up to the northeast, you'll see there is a teller building, a smaller teller building, but the main building is going to be on the southwest. So I'll shut up unless there's any questions. Let Aaron Otten go ahead and talk a little bit more about the building and the reason for Elkhorn Valley wanting this location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Aaron Otten, North Elkhorn Valley Bank. As Tim referred, we're requesting a zoning change to accommodate this new building that we would like to build here. Reason for the build is, we quite honestly just outgrown our space. Our bank's more than doubled in size in the last 10 years. We employ over 100 employees and need space to accommodate our current employees as well as giving us additional space to grow in years to come. So our plans are to construct a four-story main bank building that's going to be approximately 40,000 square feet, we think, along with a teller building that will sit on the northeast corner of the property. That will just be a drive-through facility. It won't have a walk-in teller line or lobby. So just a drive-through and ATM. Originally, we planned to, we planned to be in the first two floors and on the third floor, we would have tenant space as well as a training room and a, that will also serve as a community room for the community. And then the fourth, fourth story will be primarily just a penthouse meeting room and the rest of that will just be mechanical upstairs. It'll be four stories high. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the site, about the building, about our plans.
Any questions for Aaron? It's like you guys will be making quite the statement there, Aaron.
Yeah, we look forward to it.
It's an exciting project, one of a great deal of investment and enthusiasm for the future of the local and regional economy. So we appreciate that kind of optimism and we appreciate you also. I know there's been some work done to address maybe what once were concerns of neighbors to the north on screening and buffering. And it looks like your plans address those concerns pretty significantly, so.
Well, that's what I was seeing was what I was impressed with. And again, it's conceptual at this point in time, but you are making a statement addressing the concerns that the citizenry that was to the north expressed about the density that was occurring there, the lack of green space. There's a tremendous amount of green space here. And then just the aesthetic and landscape appeal that you're presenting that way. So that's why I'm not surprised that there is no opposition at the hearing this.
Another important step in beautification of that corridor, so. Any other questions for Aaron? Thank you. This is a public hearing, so anyone else wishing to make comment can do so. See no one. Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 7, 2019 at the request of Elkhorn Valley Bank and Trust to consider a zoning change from R1, single-family, to C3 service commercial on property addressed as 306 and 404 South 25th Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval on a nine to zero vote.
Okay, thank you, Beth. I will now close the hearing and move to item number 25. We look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5616 approving a zoning change from R1 to C3 on property addressed as 306 and 404 South 25th Street.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number 5616.
Second.
Okay, motion second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion on this, council, or anything further? Okay. If not, short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force in effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5616 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5616 on second and third reading.
Second, that also.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5616 carries on second and third.
Okay, on to our regular agenda. Item number 26. Would entertain a motion to consider acceptance of the low bid from Champion Coatings Incorporated for coating of the Tricklein Filter A interior walls at the Water Pollution Control Plant for $124,175 and authorization for the mayor to sign all contracts and documents related to the project.
Your Honor, I'd make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion second. And Steve, could you give us some background on this, please?
Mayor and Council, this is to rejuvenate, I guess, the wall in Tricklein Filter A. It's about 39, 40 years old at this point. The upper portion of that wall has deteriorated quite extensively, and so this goes in there, recoats, reseals the interior of that wall, and then provides an additional coating to the outside of that. Kind of conservatively estimating we'll get 20 years out of that, but I would, I would estimate 20 to 30 years out of that, out of that repair project, so. We did get three bids on that. The low bid was 124,175, the high bid was 181,451. We're certainly comfortable with Champion Coatings and recommend, according to their engineer approval, I'd certainly answer any other questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions?
Steve, I noted on the notes that we have on the staff memo that just came in over budget that you have, that you're gonna forego purchasing a couple other pumps or...
Yeah.
...type of blowers. Will that have any, I mean, is there an immediate need to replace those yet?
No. It's part of, part of our preventive maintenance program, and so we'll just push that off a year.
And just didn't want to take away from something that you needed right away. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? There are none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 27. I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5582 approving an amendment to Section 27-280.02 of the City Code to modify the boundaries of the North Fork of the Elkhorn River overlay district and to consider approval of a North Fork of the Elkhorn River overlay district map delineating the resulting boundary. Ordinance number 5582, as amended, passed on first reading only at the April 15 meeting and on second reading at the May 6 city council meeting.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number 5582.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. No discussion on third reading, because I'll give background for some of that. Okay, all right, so this is the third reading of the ordinance? Please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance 5582 on third reading, council members Grantquist, Langley, Merrill, Muren file voting against the ordinance, council member Weeble House. Motion carries.
Item 28. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5583 approving an amendment to Section 27-280.01 of the City Code to clarify the intent of the North Fork of the Elkhorn River overlay district and to amend Section 27-280.05 to increase the number of review board members from five to nine and to include residency requirements. Ordinance number 5583 is tabled at the January 22 meeting, passed on first reading at the April 15 meeting and on second reading at the May 6 council meeting. I would ask for your vote.
No, we have to bring up the rule.
Motion.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number 5583.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Now, I would ask you to vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5583 carries on third reading.
And finally, item number 29. Look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with Regent Construction Incorporated for the Northeast Industrial Water Main Project resulting in a net decrease of $10,111.19.
Make the motion.
Second, that, your honor.
Motion in second, and Steve, do you want to make comment on this, please?
Mayor and Council, this is the Russian contract for a water main extension that runs up Victory Road from Magna Drive, terminates on the east side of Nucor Steel. Primarily driving this is a change from an aggregate water main back, backfill to a sand-based water main backfill, and it was a function of local supply of adequate material. This change does not impact the structural capacity or structural performance of it, of the ductile iron structure that, that we're installing for water main. You'll generally see that those prices are coming in lower, around 5% lower or so. Couple changes, addition butterfly valves, fire hydrants and so forth. Those, there's some adds going on in here reflecting the water tower that'll be installed out there, probably about a year from now, we'd be in, under that construction project. So we're doing a little bit of work ahead of that tower project, so it'll be just easier to tie into when we get there.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions, comments, council? If none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council.